The proposed fleet maintenance building is in this back area here where the existing long-term police storage is located. This is the proposed floor plan of the new administration building. At this point, you do have some two-dimensional images in your packets that you each can take home. But we do have a three-dimensional model. Rather to walk through some of this two-dimensional stuff, why don't we take a look at the model? Bear with us one moment. This is from the Wells Road side. This is the new entrance. This is existing portion of the building which will be renovated. There's a portion down the middle here which is existing that we will be renovating and altering, and then the additions will go essentially on three sides of the building. Every attempt has been made to try and make all-new pitched roofs, to try and eliminate the flat roofs on the structure. There's a new, grander entrance being proposed to the front of this building, something with a little bit more signage, has a little bit more street presence. And as you see, we can rotate around the building. The police would be off to this side of the building, to the right side. This is kind of where the entrance is to the building now. Keep rotating around. As we rotate around the back, this is the police station portion of the building. And then as we swing back towards the tennis court sides, we get back to more of the public side of the building. This is the rear of the public side of the building. To the side here, between the building and the existing tennis courts, is some employee parking areas. Keep rotating around. Employee entrance, another employee entrance, and then back around to the public side of the building. If you can imagine removing the roof of the building now and looking inside of the building. This is the main public entrance to the administration building. There's also a new public entrance to the police side of the building. Essentially, this whole right side over here is the police. And then from the public entrance towards the administration side, we have the public entrance into the new public lobby areas where there are some restrooms immediately to your right. There is information desks and service desks off to the left for both codes, as well as administrative offices. And then directly in front of you off this lobby is the entrance into the new public meeting room. So the left-hand side naturally is the administrative offices. That would have, as I said before, the codes and zoning towards the front. Immediately behind would be the administrative staff. Behind that would be the parks and recreations. The new public meeting room would have a dais built into the back of the room here so we'd be entering. Center of the dais, behind the dais would have doors back into private areas which could also serve as secondary means of egress out of this space. And from this area back into chambers, areas, there'd be rooms that would double-function as board chambers, as well as access to restrooms and convenience spaces. And then rotating around to the police. Again, as I described before, the public entrance to the police is up in front here off of our new entrance canopy. There would be immediately a public lobby which would have access to a conference room, access to a public restroom, as well as to a window to administrative staff. Walking back further, we'd have additional administrative staff, the chief and lieutenant space, some archival areas. Back a little bit further, then is the Sally Court into the building. Now, this part of the site is the private side of the site. There would be a gated fence out here on the site. Once we get through that gate, we're into the secure area of the parking on-site. They would have access into that Sally Court. From the Sally Court, prisoners could be ushered into the secure areas of the police station with 1, 2, 3, 4, holding rooms, processing rooms, secure interview rooms. Back beyond that are patrol areas, sergeant's offices, detective's offices. On the inside, inboard of the building would be locker rooms, evidence storage rooms, processing rooms. I'm sorry, the detective's area, I believe, was back in this corner, and then this was a lounge area. So there's one exterior room in a secure area of the police department which is lounge for the police department. This entrance would be the day-to-day entrance for police staff entering the site, entering into the building. And then the patrol entrance or exit would be off to this side. So patrolmen would drive their vehicles, park in the rear, enter in through the staff entrance to the lockers, what they need to do, and then they would exit through the patrol area. Are there any questions with this building? Anything?
Explain to people who don't know what a Sally Court is.
A Sally Court is a secure garage where a police department would bring someone who's been detained or arrested into the back of the vehicle. They could pull into that garage. They could close that door down. They can secure their firearms. They then bring that person into a secure area for processing.
Okay. And how many peoples can the meeting room seat?
I believe it was programmed around 100 people.
We have that here now. I think it should be more than that because we're always running out. We'll run out of room here, but that's another issue. Talk about that.
That's something we could take a look at.
Yeah, I think we need to tweak that. And then the roof line, I don't know if we talked about this or I dreamt it, but there was some discussion about breaking up that roof line so it would have some outside lighting, light coming in, some openness to the world instead of all that heavy enclosure because there's a lot of interior space that has no sunlight.
Right, there is.
Did we talk about that?
We did.
Okay.
There are some opportunities and potentials. We are trying to work in this alternative with the existing building, and there's...
Solarium effect, heat effect.
There's economies with trying to maintain the existing building and working with that in this area. That being said, there may be some opportunities to bring in some dormer lights, bring in a little bit of daylight into some of the work areas to the sides.
I understand the economics about it, but this is a building that, complex that we're going to be using for presumably another 50, 60 years as this one was. And we know how much light and effects in the working environment and even the folks who come here. So I just think that we need to explore that a little bit. That's all the questions I had. Do you have anything?
Just one other comment, and I'm glad you brought up about the Sally Court because that is something we don't have today. And so that is something that's very much needed. And also, if you could kind of zoom out a little bit, you mentioned it right there about the gates, and if you would just elaborate a little bit more about how that whole section is fenced in.
It is. Again, the site area has a portion of this parking area in sight which is really kind of a secure gated area. This isn't completely accurate to the latest design, but it's intended that this half of the parking really have a gated, fenced, secure area so patrolmen can bring their personal vehicles in. They can come through this gate. They can park their vehicles in a controlled, safe environment. And it's also where the police patrol cars would be kept as well. Another portion to this, or another element to this, which is not shown in this model, is proposed a new secure carport area, which is another building. Should we take a look at that?
The carport and the large evidence storage as well.
I have some basic plans of the carport area. This is a new building that would be proposed to the side. It is based on a pole barn. It's essentially a garage building which would have four or five bays. There we go. There's four or five bays to one end which actually would have overhead doors and man door. That would be used for police storage. There would be some three-sided structure to the one side, so it's open full-time on the one side. And again, that's for patrol cars to park in to keep them sheltered from the elements more or less. This is what we're referring to as a carport. This is a wood pole frame building with very simple materials and a very simple traditional look to it. This also becomes part of that gated, secured area. This building actually creates a part of that fence, if you will, along the one side of the property and helps secure that space.
Can I do anything?
Just from the police side perspective, just kind of a question to the chief. I mean, does that fit within what you were looking for?
Yep, it's exactly what we're looking for. It's a brand-new building somewhere else. It's extremely functional and it separates the issues that I had, the public's in one area, the secure detained areas one, and then the work area for the patrol. And keeping the, limiting the amount of public interference coming through our parking lots when we have detainees out in the middle of the parking lot is just a thousand times better than what we're working with right now. Usable space.
Just a quick question. It looked like in the police department side where the patrol entry is or exit and so on, some of those vestibules, they have a double entry like a vestibule where they're secure. Is that correct or is that more for elements in that?
I think that's more of...
Is it for elements?
I don't know if it's necessarily a secure vestibule. I think they were probably more like a functioning vestibule like...
Just for the elements and...
Correct.
Like a secure area.
Right. Well, I saw it there and then in the back. Okay.
In this area. And that's more just to prevent all the cold air from rushing in.
It was there in the back door I saw going into the police department. Looked like there was a double.
Here as well, correct. And that's something we can discuss if you feel that's a problem. Generally, it's nice to have a vestibule to enter into a building so we're not bringing in all that cold air or hot air every time the door's opening.
I trust it's been thought out, just was curious. Okay. Thank you. Nothing else.
Okay. Moving on to the next. We got another building to look at, right?
We got a couple of them. Carport, next building. This is a plan. It's kind of hard to see, I apologize. Again, the handouts you have, you should be able to see them a little more clearly. This is a plan of the existing Public Works Building. This is the lower level. This is the upper level. There's only, this portion of the building is the second floor, is the only two-story element to the building. This building is being altered without increase to building area. So we're just taking this existing space and reworking it, getting a couple of offices, some locker rooms, restrooms, female locker room and restroom as well. There's an existing kitchenette we're keeping, maintaining, and we're also picking up a little bit of storage. The remainder of this area will be a lounge area.
This part of the building was unfinished when this building was originally built. In fact, the uses that are being put into it were what was intended 20 years ago when this building was built. Parking rack is currently using it for activities.
Any questions on this? This is the existing police storage or pole building that is down in the back corner. It is proposed to use this building to renovate it for new fleet maintenance. Fleet maintenance would be obviously moved out of this building in the back area and down into this existing building. So we're simply looking at adding some interior office areas and a restroom. And I think there's a work area, parts room, and it's a simple parts maintenance. But the remainder of the space just remains open for working on vehicles, to relocate existing lifts into a couple of the bays and have another bay that's there and available for use for maintenance, for inspection of township vehicles, that sort of thing. There is also a proposed storage off to the side of this building extending the pole frame construction to create a three-sided lean-to, if you will, for storage of municipal vehicles. Okay? It stands. We're going to rework the one facade towards the Public Works Buildings to change the overhead doors, add a man door over to this side for a protected storage area. That's it on there as well. Now, this is a Parks and Recs Activities Building which is being proposed out at the opposite corner of the Township Park up at New Britain Road, Lower State Road, up in that corner of the property. This is a building that's largely based around an activities room which can be subdivided with a partition from the space. Now, the floor plan right now essentially is, it's laid out a little different. The program is still the same. Couple of restrooms, a kitchen area which can be used not only for classes for the Parks and Recs Department, but it also could be used to support these activity spaces. And on the outside of the building is a covered pavilion. It's also intended that this kitchenette could be used to support that as well, as well as we're adding in a couple of single-user powder rooms that could support the park as well as this pavilion. There are some storage built into this as well. And then in the middle here is a lobby and an entrance sequence to the building. Again, the architecture is based on more of a traditional farm-like type of architecture that is not unlike Doylestown, Doylestown Township, using natural materials, natural-looking materials, stone and board and battened siding. Again, it's all pitched roofs, all sloped roofs, and an asphalt shinge roof structure. These are kind of the pretty drawings, if you will, for this.
You worked hard to get that boring box to look like that. It looks much better. Thank you.
We did. We had a few different back and forths, but I think it's a much more attractive-looking The next couple of slides are a little bit drier. These are kind of the revised floor plan, if you will. We actually wanted to extend the pavilion and separate it from the building a little bit and allow a little space between the pavilion and the building itself so that if someone was renting the pavilion and there was a need for someone to access this, if you will, almost like a snack stand or restrooms from the soccer fields, it wouldn't show as if they were intruding on people using the pavilions. Again, we still have the larger activity space subdividable into two rooms, if you like, both having access to a public lobby and restrooms up in this area. Remaining of this space on this side is storage and a janitor's area. And then this is our kitchen area. Okay? These are the revised elevations. They're essentially the same. One thing you'll notice is we pulled the pavilion out a little bit to allow for a little pedestrian way between. Okay?
Okay.
This is the site that we are looking at as it exists today. There are two parking areas off of New Britain Road which support these two soccer fields up here. There's been some ideas about how to situate and site a building and some additional parking. Why don't we go to the next slide? This was a slide that was proposed along with this building, if you will, this activities building, which is this portion right here you see of the block and the pavilion off to the side, was a proposed element that we've been talking about for quite some time, an expanded activities building which is essentially a gymnasium-sized space which could be used for the Parks and Recs Department. That has always been associated with this activity space, which is essentially just replacing what we're taking out of the existing Public Works Building. Now, with that in mind, the existing activities building, the existing use for the soccer fields, as well as proposed future use for this space, we were showing what it would take to build that out in parking by today's standards from your zoning ordinance. And Mario, help me out if you will in terms of the numbers. I think the total parking in this sketch here, you're...
Right.
Right now, there's 314 total spaces shown on this plane. Currently, there's 122 spaces for the existing fields as they exist today. Then you're...
122.
Yes, 122 there with eight, or actually six handicap parking spaces down by the sensory trail. So we took the activity building, and their common area is roughly 3,200 square feet, so that required 65 parking spaces. And then the future multipurpose addition, an 8,000-square-foot figure has been used previously. We don't think it's going to be that big. Again, it would have to be a common space. You would take some out, but since that's the number we had, that's the number we used and that requires 160 spaces. So there's, as I said, that comes up to a required, or targeted, of 347 spaces that we would need. So we just went in there and she maxed it out and we can get a 314.
I don't like the idea of building all those parking spaces now. Can't we just like put some land in reserve for future parking if we do and when we do build that thing?
Next slide.
I know there's some requirement, there's some fudging there, but it doesn't make sense to put all that macadam down now if we're not going to do anything with it for 10 years.
There you go. How's that?
How's what?
This slide, I mean, it's tough to read, but this slide, what it does, it just parks the activity building. It parks the 65...
That's better.
It adds 65 parking spaces to the one parking wing, as we call it, the one by the two of, by the parkway. And that can be, that's what we would be proposing to do now. Again, when and if the activity building gets expanded, we can look at the requirements there and see what would be required to park it. Because there are other options to providing parking, but that would be a township decision on programming.
Okay. This is a better approach. Thank you.
It also, I think, gives you some flexibility to see how this really ends up getting used up here and really see what kind of overlap there is with the activities building with the soccer fields. And you may find out there isn't as much need down the road and maybe it's worth revisiting later if we need additional or less parking.
Yep. Okay, good. Thanks. Anybody have any questions about this?
You?
I have, I have one. Did, or I don't know if this is for Mario or for whom, but feedback, we were discussing the recent Park and Rec meeting, was that the parking, was there any consideration as to whether the parking existing is meeting the needs for that, for the ball fields and that? I got the impression that they're often maxed out and even parking along the, on the road and so on. Maybe that's far and in-between, but was that taken into consideration? I know we're talking about not going bigger, and I'm all four dot paving the whole, everything, but...
Well, I, I was not under...
You're going based on the calculations, sure.
Well, again, the existing fields were designed for...
Well, again, the existing fields were designed for the 125 parking spaces that are there now.
Right.
That was done when the, when the fields were first, let's say, constructed. I don't know how often those fields would be, let's say, maxed out, and then there'd be people, let's say, with overflow parking. But, I mean, if, if you can give us some information on how mu, how many more spaces it would take to, let's say, alleviate that overcrowding, and how often, and how often it happens, because if it happens once a year, I don't know if it's...
Not worth going for the whole thing, yeah.
Worth, you know, putting in an extra, another 30 parking spaces for that event, but if it's happening at every, at every soccer game, then something that does need to be looked at.
Is the trailhead parking helpful in any regard? The trailhead parking?
Again, I'm not that familiar with the parking in that area, but I believe it is being used that...
Yeah, the trailhead parking provides about 50-some spaces.
53 spaces.
53 spaces there. Obviously owned by PennDOT, but we have an agreement with them to maintain it and...
We use it.
We, you know, certainly people use it all the time. It's there, and whether they're, it's close, so...
I don't know that we need more parking right now.
Plus, we have the other parking in the park. I mean, you have to walk over, but it's there.
All right. Well, unless there's a need for, unless some, someone demonstrates a need for more parking in this plan, then we'll, we'll look at it then. Anything else about this?
So, with that, I'd like to move on to the schedule. Yep, okay. So, we saw the overall schedule, like I talked about at the intro, and again, what I want to do now is drill down into each. Again, you have all these six main kind of tasks here to have to be completed to really get to basically the end of construction, so I'm going to break down each of the six into some subtasks. So, here, see, the financing and bonding process. Again, here's where we are today. You can see, again, what the projected duration of this would, would take, would take us to February 28th of 2017, and some milestones on the way, basically to get us to a construction notice to proceed. Couple of things that have occurred already is, obviously, is the, the public finance management presentation to the board. This collection of information, a rating agency, preliminary official statement, started actually on 12/2, and going back to 11/15, where the board actually selected bond council. So, basically, just looking at the steps that we need to get to, to get to this, basically, financing. So, is there any questions on, on this slide?
I know.
No.
Yeah, we're good. You just...
Okay. Design and bidding. Again, same idea, we're here today at the red line. You can see that we have the architectural plan preparation and construction documentation, the interior design, site plans. This is basically our design period. It started back in 8-1, and we are in process. We're looking at some preliminary, obviously, site plan layout right here. We would anticipate architect, the interior design to start somewhere in January. And again, based on today's presentation and where we stand, we would like the board's direction to move forward with these conceptual plans. Couple of milestones would be is the architectural plan document review by the township, and getting to the bidding process, and some milestones here, advertising, when bids will be due, recommendation to the board for award, and again, the 8-1 notice to proceed for construction. Any questions on that slide?
No.
Okay. Zoning and permitting, again, tasks that we have to complete. We could see that the preparation of the text amendment and the, to text and map amendment has been started, and then, obviously, the approval period, and then permitting for the site plans. Couple of milestone dates up here with the planning commissions, recommendation to advertise, the zoning and text amendment, the board's authorization to do that, recommendation to approve the site plan and the text amendment for adoption by the board. We're looking to get March 7th of 2017 for that approval. These will go, all be ongoing processes as we get through the site plan development. Okay? Any questions there? Construction. So, basically, with the 8-1 notice to proceed, this is what our construction looks like. As Jim indicated, we have all the specific buildings broken out here, fleet maintenance, the carport, large evidence, public works, Park and Rec building, and admin. This is the longest lead time of 16 months right now. That's what, that's what Jim and Joe are planning, proposing right now. These hopefully will be a little shorter in duration, with right now an anticipated 11/30/2018 completion date, anticipated. So, that's where, where that stands. That's it as far as the schedule is concerned. And then, last but not least, the proposed temporary office location. We are here, obviously, at 425 Wells Road. Proposed location would be the former AAA building on, at 1635 Eastern Road, some exterior elevation photos. This is from Eastern Road. This would be the main entrance of the building for, basically, administrative and police, where the public would come. The anticipation is that there would be space in here to hold public meetings. There needs to be some work to get to a point where we could occupy this building. We in process talking to the owner regarding terms of a lease and things that we would require to occupy, not only for our needs, but also for, for codes. The approximate distance between the two is less than two miles.
You had used the word proposed site. Is it an alternative that you're investigating, or is it really the one you're proposing?
That is, this is the one right now we're proposing, the one and only site we're proposing.
There's only one at this point. The other alternative...
Right, but we don't know any terms. We don't know anything yet.
No, no, we do not.
That's why I just don't want to jump to a decision before we...
No, no, there's no, there's no decision.
Okay.
The other alternative is to be on-site with trailers that would occupy park space, so we would take away from either parking in the park or field space. And the cost for that, and I'm going to look at, to Joe or Jim, because I know that they investigated those costs for approximately almost two years, is...
Over 300,000, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we still need to get details on this. We've talked to the property owner. We've seen, I know Barbara and Ken have seen the facility. We've seen it. It would work for our needs temporarily. Obviously, we need to go forward and bring back details to the board. We would like the ability to go do that, from, you know, sort of authorization to go get those details, bring them back to the board. Obviously, until we have sort of the bond and everything in place, we wouldn't be signing any leases. You know, the other facilities, the other office space in the township that we looked at is already full, and so I know one of the recommendations was to stay in the township, and this is a facility that has the space available that we could utilize.
Why do we need to stay within the township? For a temporary housing, shouldn't we look at other alternatives if there are any?
We don't, we don't need to, I don't think, under the whatever, but it's preferred.
I agree with preferred, yeah.
You know, it's preferred. And if you know of anything just outside the border, I mean, I certainly will take a look. I don't, off the top of my head.
Okay.
All right. I feel confident that we'll be able to find something that is, that we can negotiate, a good market value and, or less a market value, who knows?
Right.
What did you say was the end date on the construction proposed?
It's, it's right now is 11/30 of 2018, so the basically occupying sometime in December of 2018.
Yeah, okay. Let's write that, everyone, write that down. We're going to hold all contractors to that date. We've done that before.
We're going to hold Dave Tomco to that date.
Speaking of contractors, there's a, there's a question circulating whether we need a construction manager or management team, and I was wondering if we, Dave, you could probably answer this, at least not today, at some point, whether we have the talent here to manage the construction, rather than hire for hundreds of thousands of dollars, who knows, somebody else. I know we have a lot of good people here.
We have a lot of good people. Stephanie, do you want to respond to that, or do you want me to kind of...
You can jump in, and then I'll jump in.
So, we've, we've basically gone and, and talked to, either in person or spoke to on the phone, a number of municipalities, including Springfield Township, Montgomery County, the Gambler Borough...
Conchahocken.
Conchahocken.
Talked to several of my colleagues who've been through this process.
Montgomery Township, we spoke to them regarding their activities building. The question that is of a concern to us is that while we could do that, it will be a full-time job. That's what we've been told. We've been, everybody has recommended to us to pursue a construction management firm because they are a unbiased, well, a third party that is working in our, on our behalf. Okay? Not the architects as much as we like, Philip's Donovan, not the general contractors. They work for Doylestown Township and will represent us the entire way, not only...
The contractors work for us, too.
They do, but as much that they have their own interests as in to do, to work quickly as possible for the amount of money that they bid, so therefore, it's just going to be a full-time job. So, the concern that we have is that if we are here full-time, then other responsibilities will lag. That's a, that's a concern.
What do they cost?
We don't know yet. That's why we...
Well, we have a ballpark idea. You guys have been doing this for years. We got an idea, right?
One of the managers told me, you know, expect 100, 150, some, it depends how you set it up and structure it. What I would recommend at this point in time is that the staff team and the board members who are on the team, thank you, get together, bring a couple of these companies in and talk to them.
What did Solberry do? You guys worked with Solberry. Are they using a construction management people?
We administered...
You did it? Okay. See, how much did you cost for that? It's about the same thing, right? It's a $10 million project or $12 million? No, it's $6 million.
Construction management fee can be anywhere between 3% and 5%.
And what was the price of their, their building? I forget what the newspaper said.
Yeah. Say around $2 million.
About all?
Yeah.
That's all that cost for their construction? I thought it was six or something.
No, 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 no. It was just a public work.
Yeah, I think it would be good for you guys to go and collect some more information and bring it back, so we can make a, a good informed decision. Yeah, I, I, in my mind, I can rationalize why a full-time construction manager, other than administration staff doing it. I, I, I get the concept and the benefits of doing it, but I'd also like to know what the cost is and what the potential risk is and stuff like that. So, let's gather our information, let's come back, and let's, let's make a decision.
All right, Mr. Reasonable One. So be it. Anybody have any questions?
No.
Any questions from out there?
Yes.
All right. You have to take the microphone, Ernie. Please, sorry.
Ernie Gash, 15 Wilkes-Shire Road. It's dealing with the parking at the fields that they use for soccer. I have a granddaughter who's playing on those fields, and they will have teams that are coming, waiting to get there, onto the, the field and everything else, and I've seen no conflict in parking at the present time.
Okay.
Good, good, thank you.
Joe Paternostro has his hand up first.
Yeah, Joe Paternostro, Halk Road, and I assume you can hear me.
I can hear you.
If I use the word cops, that's, that's a nice way of saying it, because I'm from New York. Otherwise, it's a police officer. I noticed, number one, in the open public area, why don't you build it so that you have an extension behind it or on the side? Because there's occasions when you get multiple hundreds of people into that room, and if you do it like a catering place where you can open it up even further, that would probably be pretty good. The other thing I noticed regarding fire is a lot of the rooms in the, in the main municipal building only have one exit. In case there's a major fire, somebody's going to get nipped.
I assure you, Sinclair Salisbury is not going to let us...
Okay, the other thing I noticed is around the police station or police section, you've got a wire fence around the whole thing, and that electric gate opening up. That's what I see. How does the fire department come in to put a fire out in the police section if that gate is blocked?
It's magic.
That would work.
They get the code somehow. I don't know how, but they get, they get, they get, they get all kinds of special treatment in that regard, yeah. No worries.
Where are you going to put the UPS system?
UPS?
Uninterrupted power supply for the police station. I assume you may not have a, for the municipal section.
No idea.
Generators.
We have generators on the existing facility and part of the...
I can't hear.
We have, we have generators on the existing building, and we will be having generators on the new building, or the renovated building.
Thanks, Joe.
Yep.
Mr. Bright? Why are you in a cast? Tell, we all want to know.
It's just a sling. Yep, I rotated. Perfect.
Good.
So, it's mending. It's all better now.
Good.
Just in a sling. First of all, on behalf of the Park Board, I want to express our sincere appreciation for our new building. It's, it's a beautiful building. It's going to look a lot nicer than the administration building, just by the way.
I think you're right.
Thanks, Joe. I appreciate that. And we're, we're really thrilled. Oddly enough, about half our board is comprised with residents who live immediately adjacent bordering, in some cases, our park. So, at our last Park and Rec meeting, some of our board members were a little surprised at the location of, of our new building, especially in, in connection with their residents. The, the building was moved a little bit, I think definitely for the better. It's my personal opinion that the, the current location proposed for our new building will do a lot to sort of screen the expanse of asphalt, which is the necessary parking. And I think that all in all, having a beautiful architectural feature in that location will enhance visitors from our neighbors, not detract. And so, I'm, I'm very happy. I, I think that our architect has done a good job in, in addressing the concerns of, of our neighbors. I won't, I won't speak for our neighbors, because they're here and they can speak for themselves. But I, I also think that in discussing it with them back and forth, it would seem appropriate that we sort of capitalize on our being a tree city and plan on some screening between the existing neighbors' residences and the parking lot in, in our new building. Nothing dense, but certainly enough perhaps that we can sort of soften the, the parking lot and the buildings, and, and bring it back a little bit more towards what it used to be, which was a bucolic farm field with heartswoods in the background. It's changed a lot. Our township's changed a lot, and we're all growing and evolving, but maybe a couple, a couple of things to, to help our neighbors might be in order.
Thanks, Joe.
With that, thank you.
New to... Got all that?
We have, just so, John, in response, we have Judy Stern-Goldstein also on board. The, we have a contract with her as our landscape architect.
She's in case on...
Yeah, so she's, she'll be working with Mario on this as we get further into the site plan on landscape.
Please.
Hi, I'm Blath Kelly, and I am a volunteer on the Park and Rec Board, as you know. But today, I just want to speak as a resident. I just wrote a little something, and so, in speaking as a resident who resides on Central Park, my property will be greatly affected by this activity center. My family has already been very negatively impacted by the 202 parkway coming through our neighborhood. The section of the park was originally preserved as open space and is now being continuously developed and paved. It started with the paving of the walking path, which is now used as an access road. This is directly behind my house. This path is now routinely driven on by the township maintenance vehicles, the police, as well as pedestrian vehicles. Our beautiful views of the park continue to be minimized with the addition of soccer fields, large nets, bleachers, neon fencing, and two parking lots. Then came the paving of the mini trails throughout the park. As the song goes, we have literally paved paradise and put up a parking lot or two. I volunteer on the Park and Rec Board and take my responsibility very seriously. I do understand the need to help the community grow, however, also, we must preserve the natural aesthetic beauty of Central Park. I ask that you please help preserve the surrounding community views of our beautiful park and keep these views from being obstructed by greatly improving the landscaping in this area and around the newly proposed activity center and parking lots. Also, with the addition of the activity center, traffic in this section of Central Park will increase greatly. Therefore, I'm also requesting consideration that vehicular traffic be banned on the access road. I've expressed my concern before, as I have many times witnessed cars leaving the soccer fields and speeding up this road. The safety and well-being of the pedestrians, cyclists, children, and pets are all put at risk and should be a grave concern... at risk and should be a grave concern for all. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Also, we received a letter from Jan Susan Guth, which was on the table.
Yeah, we got that. Okay. Just want to make sure. All right, well, we'll definitely look into the pedestrian, I mean, non-emergent traffic using that access road, right, Chief? Yeah. It is for emergency vehicles and park maintenance, however, but other people should not be using it, correct?
It is equipped with the gate. I'm not sure why the gate doesn't get opened and shut as far as... There's a gate on Wells Road, is that right?
Yeah, I think they're going around the gate. Is that what you're saying, Blath?
They're going around the gate, and many times, the maintenance vehicles, when they're using it, they don't close the gates.
Well, we'll make sure that maintenance closes it, and maybe we can, Dave and Dick can look at it and see if there's something else we can do at the Wells Road location and also down at the part, you know, the entrance on New Brighton Road.
Thank you. All right, anybody have any other comments about this proposal? Board, anybody out there? Okay. Thanks, guys. We're going to try and get the administrative buildings to look more like the recreation building, if at all possible, but I definitely want, and we definitely need more light inside, because you saw that roof line, those roof lines are just massive blank spaces. Okay, guys? Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I assume from the board that we're okay to continue to move things forward.
Is the consensus of the board, we continue on this path so that we are done by November 30th, 2018?
It is.
Yes?
Absolutely.
Okay, you're good to go. Everyone got that date in mind? Can we write it on the back there? All right, signs. There's a presentation from DeGoria Catalyst Outdoors.
Do they need a few minutes to set up?
I don't know, I just need a plug.
Okay. You guys might want to stay for this Park and Rec Board. You know, this might be an important discussion going forward. Just thought. Thank you.
It used to be the old folks' home. It's no longer that.
I'm going to do it over on.
Are there any visitors or other public comment while they're setting up that we need to...
Yeah, off of Almhouse.
Nope, nobody else? Okay. You're good to go, guys, whenever you're ready.
We're a big builder. I think it's late.
Are we allowed to dim the lights as well?
Yes. Yeah. Sinclair, can you dim the lights? Mr. Salisbury, can you dim the lights? God bless you, Ed. That's good. I think that's, is everyone, can everyone see this? This is good for us. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And thank you, everybody, for the time this evening. I really do appreciate it.
I need you to get closer to the mic and identify yourself. Sorry. You're on TV.
Sure.
Live streaming.
My name is Rob DeGoria. I'm the president of business development for Catalyst Outdoor. I appreciate everybody's time this evening, and I'll keep it brief to about 15 minutes. And I'd like to share a little bit about the company and what we do, and if afforded the opportunity to do something in the township, to continue conversations. We develop outdoor advertising assets in the Philadelphia region. We happen to be the largest digital outdoor advertising company in the Philadelphia region. When you think of digital outdoor, you think of your typical billboard. 99% of the time, people think that, and while we do have some of those installations in our portfolio, we actually developed something and created something that I'd like to bring to your attention today. One is the monument structure, and one is the civic, I'm sorry, and one is the occupied structure. Monument structures are, think, welcome to certain townships with water features and lighting features and landscaping features for the affluent suburban market, hence the reason why we're here today. We have a project...
That's not us.
Two projects, two projects that we, in Chester County, one in...
That's Chester County. That's not us.
Right, that's right. One south of the borough of Westchester, in a township called Westtown Township, and another one is in Concord Township, which is right on the border of Chester County and Delaware County.
Very rich people there.
Yes, very much so, very much so. And they have utilized, and if you'd like, at the end, we could talk about the benefits of those projects there and show you that, but I'm not going to get into that. I'd like to just show you a little bit further about our occupied structure product in our inventory. And I want to bring this to your attention, and as we joke, Barbara, with Chester County, this is an occupied structure in Lower Oxford Township in Chester County on Route 1 that we're building as we speak and working with them on. And what you'll notice here is this is a barn. This is a barn that we're building from scratch. We are building the barn from scratch, and before I jump into the real reason why I'm here, the barn is actually going to be used by the township to house farming equipment and landscaping equipment. They're actually going to use this, this shell. But what I want to bring your attention to is obviously the active area here. If you'll notice, you can't really see behind the red, behind the truck. This is an ad for GMC. Do you remember what you used to paint on the side of buildings back in the day, used to whitewash in the city, and that's how the advertising industry has actually evolved? Well, now, we have the ability to essentially bake in the diodes so they look like they're baked into the barn board. So, when the screen is off in those evening hours, and again, remember, team, we're shutting the signs off at 11:30 PM and bringing them back on at 6:00 in the morning, sir. They are not on in the evening hours. But when it's off, it simply looks like a barn. It looks like it belongs in Chester County along Route 1, and I'll just give you a real quick visibility into what that looks like. They asked us to put this together for them. This is obviously real. The cars are real, the road is real. This is not, but this is to scale, and this is what we're doing in a very rural, very prideful of their farming and rural heritage in Chester County. I also want to share with you this because it leads into the design that I'd like to show you here today. We're also working with municipalities on building fire municipal buildings. These could be libraries, these could be fire stations, these could be EMS facilities, but we integrate our technology into those buildings as well. Our conversations with townships have shown that if they need extra coverage from a support standpoint, maybe we build an EMS facility on the other side of town. This has proven to be very successful in conversations with townships as well. So, why am I here today? Why am I here is Doylestown Township, Route 611, we've identified a parcel of land that is county-owned, and as you know, all this is county-owned, just south of Almhouse Road, for a potential installation if afforded the opportunity. And I know it's small down here, but I want to bring up a couple of features here and why. Why did I talk about this particular spot? To gateway into the township, remember, your township borderline is obviously here, so any project we can do that's close to the edge of the township, that's great, if the township so chooses to have their identification on it. This is really important. Commercial and retail presence. From a business perspective of who would be on the sign, you're surrounded by commercial and retail presence, obviously, across the street with the shopping center with Doylestown Point Plaza. It is away from residential, far away from residential, and we always look for that in our projects. We always look for that in our projects. And lastly, there's about 45,000 cars a day that travel, and, sir, you know that, on Route 611. This is the view heading down, south of Almhouse Road and heading down towards Nishamni Manor. This area here, this grass area here, is where I'm about to show you our idea, our idea for an occupied structure within Doylestown Township. Let me take you through this as if you were in a car and what you might see. What we wanted to do is we wanted to show you an idea that pays homage to the roots in Doylestown Township. This design is not just thought of by ourselves. It's actually called a Schweitzer barn, and you'll see that by the jut-outs that come here. We have a lot of friends that are doing projects of ours in Lancaster Amish. They helped us design this. This particular barn has on-premise signage for the Nishamni Manor over here, you'll see in a minute, beautiful Bucks County fieldstone, skylight to allow a lot of light in, and Coppola wind vanes, weather vanes for aesthetics. You'll see in a minute. How would this be used, or how can it be used? This can actually be used as an art gallery. It could be used as an art gallery. It could be used as a home for a local nonprofit. It could be used as office space or warehouse services, right? The Barn Nature Center is right up the road there, on the same parcel of land. 2,500 square feet, bathrooms underneath for event reasons, 2,500 square feet at the top level, 250 square feet, 100 square feet at the bottom level. The attention to detail, we thought about in the hardware and the barn and the doors and the fieldstone. This is just set up just to show you what, in an event, it could be a political event, it could be an event that the township so chooses to use. Lots of natural light coming through the ceiling as well. I wanted to stop there, and Pete, if you can just go to SketchUp, the same program the previous group had used. I want to stress the importance of the project that we do in townships that are the occupied structures. I started talking about different ways that this could be used as an art gallery or as a home for a local nonprofits. I understand a woman's place is there, the Barn for Nature Center is there. The possibilities are endless. It could be an extension for office space as well. That's an idea for the occupied structure that we would have. If there is an appetite for a monument structure, one of those structures that is really not inoccupied, where you're not bringing community members to the site, here's an example of something that we thought might fit or might work within Doylestown Township, so typical turnout shed. And this can be used as simply a way to memorialize some of the equipment and the farming equipment to pay homage to the history here in Doylestown Township. You'll notice that the light can come through the back on the active, I'm sorry, on the boards in the back, old lighting here, so as cars go by, you can actually see, almost like a museum piece, if you will. The active area would actually be in the shape of, not a boring rectangle, it could actually be in the shape of this here. We just happened to put the Fane Hill Castle here, or a communication platform you might want to use, but this would be the quote-unquote "active area" for the LED. So, the purpose of today's conversation is to show you that on a particular property of land that happens to be owned by the county, we've had conversations with the county. I understand that they've had preliminary conversations with you around redevelopment of their site alone. We wanted to talk to you about the potentiality of doing a project like this personally. I think you have a piece of land that could be used for activation in any of those uses that I had mentioned before, if it's extended office space or it's a home for a nonprofit. If I can just end, and then I would love some feedback or questions, if I can just end with two slides, just on the benefits. What does this mean for Doylestown, if there was an appetite to do this? Because it's not just building something that looks like, we try to build something that looks like it fits and it belongs within the township, but there are some hard and soft benefits that I'd ask that you guys to consider as well, because the quality of work that we would do in the construction, hopefully you'd be able to see and recognize what's coming up. Okay. Whatever the design would be, again, if it afforded the opportunity, would be 100% unique to Doylestown Township. There wouldn't be any other one like this designed in the country. It would be your communication platform. So, see this here? I've actually, I have a lot of family and friends that live in the county and live in the township here, or not in the township, here in the county. This would be an extension of your newsletter. This could be a platform for public safety information, weather alerts. I happen to notice that the first-ever movie in the park, Transylvania, this summer, right? This could be something Parks and Recs could use for messaging, the police could use for messaging, the township could use for messaging. And a couple of other things. Local nonprofits, we're very, very, very prideful of this. Local nonprofits can use the displays at no cost, at any point in time. 100% of the design and engineering and approval, we would incur, Catalyst would incur, the township would not have to cut a blade of grass around there in terms of maintenance as well, in perpetuity. And 100% of the displays would be insured, and the structure, quite frankly, if it were an occupied structure, insured for $5 million in public and $3 million in property damage. The point here that I'm trying to make is there'd be $0 outlaid from a township perspective in this potential project. And then I'll end with this, and then go back to the designs. Those are the soft benefits. There is a hard benefit to the township as well, in the way of financial consideration, if there's a desire to move forward. This is a sample. By no means is this drawn up for Doylestown Township. This is a sample. We have conversations with townships to say we are able to give financial consideration up to about $50,000 a year for 30 years, for a total of $2.4 million over the life of the project, or the life of the lease, if it were a long-term lease or what have you. And what you can see down here, there's always small print, but what this says is, obviously, this varies depending on the traffic, depends on the demographic, but as Barbara, as we just joked, those townships like Westtown Township and Concord Township, these are the type of townships that we do these type of projects in. You will not see one of these on the side of the turnpike or I-95. It's not conducive for that type of landscape. So, we can just end by saying I appreciate the time today. I would love any feedback that you have here, but in future conversations, the intention would be to build something, if afforded the opportunity, that fits and belongs within Doylestown Township, looks like it belongs, and ends up serving as a platform for communication that the township could use at any point in time. Actually, as a matter of fact, this is as a result of that communication platform. What this is and how this gets effectuated is essentially we provide the township a spot, a spot to use for advertising components, and the township ends up leasing that back. But in actuality, there is always space on the board for the township to use as a communication platform, essentially, an extension of your e-newsletter and the newsletter I have in the hand here. So, if you can just go back to design. That's all for my presentation this evening. I really appreciate your time. If there's any questions on the design or what we do, I would truly appreciate any feedback.
I have just one question. I'm a little confused.
Sure.
I'm confused what service you're marketing here. Are you a developer that wants to put up a building and rent the space?
We are.
Or are you a advertising guy that's selling ad space to put up information on, quote, "billboards"? While it's not a billboard, it's still terminology.
Great question.
Which part do you do?
Great question. There's, if I can answer it by saying "all," and then let me explain. We are a development company first and foremost, and then we have a sales team that goes and sells the ads. If you can go to the circle on the ad content. We work with municipalities, and some of which I mentioned here today, to find projects that fit like they belong in the township. We would then work to build those installations. Once those installations are up and running, this is really important, because 88%, you'll see in a minute, 88%... Yeah, that's fine. Oh, they shut it off. Okay. That's okay. I can speak to it if this is shut off. 88% of the clients that you would see on that board are local businesses, local businesses. So, our sales team goes and knocks on those doors of those local businesses, and you will never see anything that's questionable in terms of pornographic nature or alcohol content or cigarettes and the like. So, we do end up, essentially, how we survive, and this is to sell the ad content, but I hope you can see from today, it doesn't look, breathe, or act like a typical, quote-unquote, billboard.
Okay, so you build it for our use, our community use, at no cost to us, you maintain it in perpetuity.
Correct.
And you pay us up to $50,000 a year, and you build it on property we don't own. Somehow, you do that, and then you sell to...
They would need an agreement with the county, obviously.
Yeah, you sell to, but here's my question. If we don't do this, you can still have an agreement with the county and build it anyway?
There's zoning relief.
Yeah, no.
I know, but they still have an agreement with the county and build it for the county, and I do believe in some conversation, the county would be using this for their, maybe, storage vehicles of some sort. They have a lot of storage things we need to have. So, if we say no, you can build it anyway in Doylestown Township because the county owns the property and they could say it's okay, and they could let you do it, and then we're stuck with it either way, correct?
No, I would defer to your township solicitor on that.
Somebody write that down. If they do that, they defer to the township. We can say no and it doesn't happen.
Well, this requires some further exploration.
No, no, he said it. Somebody write that down.
No, I mean at our end.
No, I mean at our end. It's a shame they can't build on Wells Road and build a municipal building while they're doing it.
Exactly.
You know, Barbara, with, in terms of township-owned property, like Triangle Park, just to use that as an example, in certain municipalities, we actively try to find parcels of land that the township does own. And why? Because guess who's the beneficiary of that underlying land lease? Not just the consideration, the land lease. So the township gets the consideration in terms of the ad count, right, the lease back, they get that up to, but then they get a long-term lease on top of that.
All right, okay.
So I looked, I looked, I looked at the township.
I bet you did.
I did, I looked, I, I, I seen, and, and it's not far from this particular site, but the traffic drops off significantly.
Right. Oh yeah, it's a good spot for an advertiser.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a, well, yeah, it's a great.
So would you have that on both sides of the building? Your marketing thing?
Yes, so in order to capture...
Going south, going north?
Yeah, the forty-five thousand cars a day that I referenced, that was in both directions.
I understand.
Yeah, so we typically don't do a project for anything less than twenty-eight thousand cars a day, just because what, the, the project that I showed you would probably cost every bit of two and a half million dollars to build.
My question is, was your, would your advertising thing go on each side of the building?
It, it would. And then in the evening hours when it's off, that's really important, because we don't run these throughout, and suburban markets don't run it throughout. It would look like a barn. So you ever been in the Comcast Center in Center City?
It only looks like a barn at nighttime. During the days, it'll look like a big advertisement, both directions.
Well, we, we, we hope it, we hope it looks like, it would look like it belonged in the township, the, the...
We get it, we get it. I'm just, okay, we'll talk about it, we'll think about it.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions besides my obnoxious ones?
I appreciate those, though.
Just more of a, of a, of a practical one.
Yeah, sure.
What if you wanted to change, let's say there was an accident further south on 611, and, and you want to put up the road closed? Can you do those, how fast can you react and...
For emergencies.
Absolutely. We actually, we actually have relationships with those emergency managements. It's amber alerts, silver alerts, when there's a, a natural disaster, there's a recovery, that's done from, from industry level. A sign shuts down, and then you have the ability to pop that up right, right then and there. It's a matter of fifteen seconds. And as a matter of fact, even from a local level, if there was something you wanted to communicate from your seat, it's a matter of a program in fifteen seconds, and we would be able to do that. Yeah.
Mr. Berry, you had a question? Or take the, if you have to take the microphone, sorry. You don't yell at me, please. No, but the guy in the back will yell at me.
No. That's Ed Eatonbach.
My only question is, if this were to be used as an event space, are you also putting in parking and access and all the other stuff that would make that work?
Yeah, I would, I would, was hoping to be able to show you through SketchUp, the previous application there in aerial view, and how there would be an access road right off of the, the entrance going up into Neshamani Manor, parking in the back as well, so you'd be able to access that right off there. And quite frankly, just to speak to Neshamani Manor for a second, it can also be used as an, as an activity center for them. We know that they do a lot of activities there. It would be great to have five thousand square feet over here for the activities to be brought here. So of course, there'd be parking for family and friends to be...
And who manages the use of this facility?
That would be in conversations with the township. If we got to that point, and hopefully we can, that would be a worked out with the township. It would not be anything that, that we would need to discuss at this point in time, but certainly would be an event company or a staff member that would like to book events through the township. It could be the township's space, it could be your building. Quite frankly, what pays for the whole project is the advertisement that we would be getting throughout the course of the year on those two displays. And there is enough room to allow for the nonprofit use and the community messaging. So as far as the interior is concerned, to be quite honest with you, we personally don't care. I know there's a rich history here of art and culture and, and just pride in Doylestown. It could be used as an art gallery, but I hear that there's a lot of those. Okay. Well, maybe it could be used as a home for a nonprofit. There's two that are on that parcel alone. Maybe one of them can come and use that, and that could be their new home. Free of cost. One dollar, who knows? So that would, the interior could be discussed at a later...
You guys hold the insurance on it, do you?
Correct. Yes, yes, we do, Barbara. Yes, we do.
All right, thank you very much, it was very interesting.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, there were no visitors or public comments earlier, I assume they're still none? We're moving on to the regular agenda.
I have one.
Thank you, sure, thank you, good job. The next meeting of the board is Tuesday, December 20th, it'll be at 7:00 PM. If you're interested in serving on township boards or commissions next year in 2017, we need to hear from you. You can visit our website for what vacancies are, exist. And great, great gift ideas, ski lift tickets, movie tickets, benches, commemorative bricks, and township mural prints are available. Contact our offices for more information. Next item is a minutes approval for the regular meeting of November 15th, 2016. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Any questions, changes, corrections?
Nope.
Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Oh, is there a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Moving on, now correspondence, none?
None.
Reports from the solicitor.
The board will recall that you authorized our office to appear before your zoning hearing board in connection with an application filed by Mr. Basely, who resides at 106 Julie Lane. You'll recall that Mr. Salisbury advised you that Mr. Basely had asked for a permit to build something, and he was told he could not build the patio because it exceeded the impervious surface. They went back to inspect and found he in fact had built the patio. He then filed an application with the zoning hearing board requesting a variance to have the impervious surface be exceeded by, from twenty percent, which is permitted, to twenty-two point six percent. Your zoning hearing board denied the application for a variance. He then approached our office about whether the township would be amenable to letting him build a rain garden or add some trees to deal with the additional stormwater, and obviously, that's not something that should be decided by the staff or myself, and I felt it was appropriate to bring it to the board for your reaction.
Well, I got a strong reaction from Mr. Colletta, who cannot be here. And he says, "Why do we ask our zoning hearing board to support our zoning if we throw out the decision?"
I agree.
And he says, "What precedent does that tell the zoning hearing board and also people who do follow the rules of our zoning?" So he was not inclined to give this applicant any relief beyond, I mean, and, and counter being the, or countermand the zoning hearing board's decision.
I mean, beyond that, he applied for a permit, was told no, and then did it anyway. I, I have a hard time...
Are they the facts? You know the facts? That he actually applied for?
That's what it stated in our, in our notes.
But that was after he built it.
He built it and then applied for the permit?
Right.
Oh, I, I, I think he applied, I read it again. He applied and got denied.
And got denied and then built it anyway. Okay, yeah.
He was told he couldn't build the extent to which he wanted. So then he got a permit for something less, for a deck. Then when they went out to inspect, you see the deck was built and the patio. That's what caused it. All right, Stephanie?
Yeah, pretty much. And then he's, he's over the, by two point six over the impervious surface. And then the zoning hearing board agreed not to grant him the... Had he gone to the zoning hearing board prior, he'd probably have done it.
Okay, so what, what does he have to do to...
He has to remove two point six percent of the patio.
Okay. Let's see, what do you think, guys?
Did, did he present to the zoning hearing board these other options of building a rain garden and other things?
I don't recall that he did.
What's your thought, Sean?
What are they typically, I mean, the zoning hearing has already declined it, has already declined it, so...
Yeah.
I mean, it's kind of putting the horse away after the door's closed.
Yeah, the only thing would be, Jeff, he could, he could take an appeal, right?
Well, he could take an appeal, yes. I don't think he's going to be successful, but he could file an appeal, the board. I mean, obviously, if he was able to reduce the impervious to like twenty point three, it would be de minimis, which would be different than twenty-two point six, but it's not de minimis when you're at twenty-two point six.
Well, it sounds like the, the board is not inclined to give this gentleman any relief. Is that what I get?
Correct.
Okay, so be it, moving on. Next item, police chief.
Nothing to report.
Engineer?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, manager?
Just two quick things. One, I just wanted to let the board know that, and Ken Snyder was present, we had our kickoff meeting recently with Panoni and Baker on the replacement of the Chapman Road Bridge. So things are moving along on that regard. The next thing I have is a memo from Karen on behalf of the Park and Recreation Board. Jan Sussin Guth, whose term expires December 31st of this year, is, is not renewing, does not want to be reappointed, and the recommendation from your Park and Recreation Board is to consider appointing Kathy Brown to fill that vacancy. That is their recommendation.
Okay. Does anyone want to support that recommendation by motion? Okay, who's second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome back, Kathy.
The other thing I have is we received a letter from a resident who apparently did not receive the...
Didn't get a tax bill.
Didn't get the county and township tax bill, is looking for a waiver on the fees. Our portion of the fees are twenty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. I also provided you some information when a similar situation came up earlier this year.
Is there a motion to waive the twenty-six dollar fee, penalty fee on this applicant?
What do we do, Laura? We verified that she's always paid her bill on time, that this truly was...
According to the tax collector, yes.
Okay.
Is there a motion to?
Make a motion to waive the twenty-six dollars.
Twenty-six dollars and twenty-two cents, whatever it is. Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Yes.
We can only waive our portion, and we have to, she'll have to go to the county for...
Second. Yeah, the bigger portion's with the county.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, good, thanks. Supervisors, comments from Mr. Tuva?
I, cover a park and rec. Thank you.
Ken?
Just wanted to expand a little bit. You had made the announcement about the vacancies for committees. Even if you want to get involved and the committee you want to get involved with has no vacancy, please go and attend. Keep going. The only thing, you, you get full participation except you do not vote. But get involved and, and go in those committees that you really want to get interested in, and sooner or later, there'll be an opening. So don't just look at those that have a vacancy, look at all of them and, and pick one and get involved.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Anything from you?
Oh, just one quick thing regarding, just kind of putting it back out there so nobody forgets, we are still raising money for Kids Castle. We just secured twenty thousand dollars for a new playpiece that's on order, it's going to be installed sometime in January of 2017, but putting it back on everybody's radar that things are still progressing there, and shout out to Joe Salvati, because he, he pounds the pavement each and every day, and you can learn more at savekidscastle.org about our efforts at Kids Castle for children of all playabilities.
Thank you. All right, I think that's it. I'm not going to, I'll pass on my, any announcements. All right, public hearing on the amendment to non-uniform employees pension and plan to define contribution ordinance.
Based upon a recommendation from your consultant and the board's authorization to prepare this ordinance, I did so and advertised it for your consideration, and it modifies, in a very limited fashion, your defined contribution pension plan. So it's been advertised, so you can talk to public hearing, and if you're so inclined, you may proceed to approve the ordinance, which amends your defined contribution non-uniform pension plan.
Okay, the public hearing on the amendment to the pension plan is now open, is there any comments from the public? Any comments from the board? Questions? Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, well done. Okay, Doylestown United Methodist, Doylestown United Methodist, Doylestown Mennonite Church?
You've finished the unfinished business there.
Yeah. Oh, I, sorry, skipped over the township building renovations, sorry about that.
Right. At your last meeting, you tabled the proposal from Pickering Courts in Somerson to assist us with this site plan. That has been revised, the sheet of concern has been taken out, the revised 2017 pricing has been provided. Hopefully, it is an acceptable format, we've all looked at it, and the staff...
Dave, this is okay with you?
As director of operations, girl, would recommend we move forward with this.
I just have, anybody have any questions? What is, I only have one comment, and it doesn't, this is not paged, I mean, there's no pagination here, I don't know what page it is. Section two, scope of services, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, last, last phrase, "We reverse the right to update this proposal accordingly." Do you think that means that should be reserved, the right to update? I just want to correct that, because I don't want you reversing anything on us.
No, it's reserved, okay.
Okay, other than that, is there a motion to approve this proposal to Pickering Courts?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, you're good to go, if you took away that contract stuff. All right, now moving on to the Mennonite church.
You'll recall that the board agreed to waive land development for some improvements. The church is contemplating, which is basically a trail, which will have a township benefit, and your, and your approval was conditioned upon their executing a waiver of land development agreement that I prepared, and they've executed and delivered, so I believe the staff recommended the board approve the waiver of land development agreement with the Doylestown Mennonite Church.
Okay. Everyone had a chance to review the...
Yes.
Development agreement? Any questions, concerns, anybody out there? Is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Mennonite Church. And then there's a request to hook up to a public sewer that I understand from Stephanie is right there for the homeowner to hook up to.
It would recommend, we see a lot of these lately, and we would recommend that we move this on to DEP.
Okay, is there a motion to recommend that the, the hookup for 571 West Sandy Ridge be referred to the Department of Environmental Protection?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you get that, Ms. Delgado, got it? All right. Lower State Trail reimbursement agreement with the amendment.
This is an amendment, they are increasing our 1.2 million dollar project for reimbursement, which is that hundred percent back to 1,343,300 dollars.
That was the additional cost for...
Well, that's, they're anticipating it may be more, so they're just going to give us some more money.
No, we don't want it. I don't think we can accept that.
Please take it.
Okay, is there a motion to, what, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I just had a question, because this was a 10% match, right?
Which, which we've already done, that was all the engineering and everything.
It doesn't increase, the 10% match is not increased by this additional money.
Is that what you just asked, because I didn't hear that?
No, I didn't ask that.
No question, she didn't ask that.
I just assumed that since their piece is going up, our 10% is going up, now?
That's not going up.
Now, also, we had approved, I think it was thirty thousand dollars more for this trail a couple months ago. Tom Kelso came and did a presentation, and he needed more money, is that right?
No.
Uh-uh. Doesn't have an "I."
Wrong trail?
Wrong trail, I think, yeah.
This is Lower State Road, the TAP grant.